I'm going to open February 9th Board of Selectmen meeting. We're going to start out with, under appointments, we have Sally Barker and Nancy Lindsay from the Little Lake Sunapee Protective Association here to do a presentation. The way we do this is we ask people to come to the microphones. Will will show you how to turn it on if you would state your name for the record. Looks like that battery is already worn out, so he'll get you a new one.
Is this okay?
This is fine, yes.
Thank you. My name is Sally Barker. I'm speaking on behalf of the little, the Board of Little Lake Sunapee Protective Association, which we are, we have been LSPA and we are moving on to LSPA because there's always been some confusion with the Big Lake. And we are proposing a sign to educate all the residents about Little Lake Sunapee and what our volunteer organization is doing to preserve and protect it. And our hope is that this will encourage good stewardship and respect for how to best use and protect our lake. Beach users are part of the team and we should never take for granted this beautiful resource for our town. There's a large educational sign at Elkins Boat Ramp for Pleasant Lake. Signage at the Little Lake Sunapee Boat Ramp is not a good option as it is a low-traffic area and few people see it. Our sign would not be so big and is, would not be as big as the sign at Elkins, which is six different boards, I think.
Yes.
And so it would match exactly what sign is already there, which is very attractive and very visible. And I sent a note to Kim, I don't know, oh, there, there we are. So you can see the blue sign on the left and then matching that on the other side would be our sign, which would be a large sign on top with this map. And a few statistics on the map right here. It's very attractive. It was made by one of our board members. Well, I'll get into that in a minute, but we feel strongly that the more people who see the sign, the more people will understand the purpose behind the rules at the beach and the importance of caring for the lake. It should be visible to many. At the top will be this map and it's created by retired geologist and fellow board member and lakeshore owner Roger Block. Some of you may know the Block family. Besides the obvious of looking at the map, the purpose of the map is to show the location of the boat ramp. So we will have a red star to, so that the lifeguards can actually point to the spot where the boat ramp is because there's a rule at the moment that they can't want, nobody can put a boat in at the beach.
Correct.
They have to, and so they don't know where the boat ramp is necessarily. So this would be able to help them show where it is and paddleboarders and kayakers can have their boats checked for invasives by our trained lake hosts who are paid and volunteer before they launch. Such boats are not allowed to go in at the beach and enforcing this rule with the beach permit holders has been a difficult job for Putnam and especially for the young lifeguards. So having something to point to will be really helpful to them. And on the left side below the map will be an explanation of the rules as they apply to keeping the lake clean and safe. And on the right side is an explanation of what Little Lake Sunapee Protective Association is all about. We feel it's very important for everyone to know that Little Lake Sunapee Protective Association exists and is working hard to keep our lake clean and safe. No one should take this lake for granted anymore. The threat of cyanobacteria is real and it's worrisome, as is the threat of invasive plants like milfoil. Lakes in New Hampshire and somewhere nearby have had to close for public safety and four of them that are not far from us were reopened October 22nd. So this is a real problem. In many cases, these issues are caused by human error. We are working closely with New Hampshire Lakes, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, the Big Lake staff has been particularly helpful to us, and our fellow lake, our fellow lake committee members from Kesar, Kalilimook, Otter Pond, Messer Pond, this has been, we've become a very nice working group, this, particularly this winter. Can you imagine what would happen to property values if the state has to close the lake? What's good for the lake is a team effort and we hope that you will agree to the sign. Good stewardship of the lake is the focus of the sign and we are willing to cover most of the cost of the sign if you are in agreement to the design and the content, especially if you would like to use Roger Block's map. Thank you. Any questions?
I'll, so you said you're willing to cover most of the cost?
Correct. We, it, well, it depends on how much it's going to cost. We still haven't located the bill from this, the sign that's all already there, but we do know who made it. So we're getting there, but as long as a lot of it is on our mission and not just about the rules for the beachgoers, we are very happy to pay for that as much as possible, really.
I see. And would that cover installation?
I've been imagining so, yes. Unless the town has a sign installer, we, we don't know. Do they? We don't have a sign installer. Okay. That's okay. Yes, we are, we are prepared to handle that.
Okay, thanks. Any questions, Janet, Bill?
We have rules and regulations down there. Are they on the side of the building that's down there?
They, they're-
I can't picture it right now.
You can see there are no dogs allowed on the kiosk back there.
Oh, okay.
There are two signs that say no dogs allowed and on the day that we were there, there was a huge dog doo right under the sign. That, that was a little discouraging. And I think there's a sign Putnam puts up, it's not up right now-
Okay, that's-
-that says some of that. And, and they, the beach does offer kayaks and paddleboards.
Yes.
So-
It's only private boats that may not be launched or come onto the, the beach.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I'd just like to know how much it's going to cost.
Right.
I'd like to see the design and I get where you think it would be a good idea if the town were to contribute to the rules and regulations that pertain specifically to the beach.
Right.
So if, if we could have a, a cost of all of these things, I think that would be helpful and especially rendering of what the sign would look like. And I don't know, are you thinking of removing the one that's there?
No. No, it will be on the other side.
Okay.
So when you come in, there'll be the Buckland Beach, welcome to Buckland Beach on the left. And there are some signs that go under that, right, Putnam? I think they hang underneath it.
Okay.
And then we'll be, where, you see where I'm standing?
Mm-hmm.
It'll be just in that sandy area. So it's the exact same size and exact same distance from the gate. And it doesn't really block anything in terms of the view because the shed is just out of the picture.
Right.
And there is a, an empty wall on the shed, but I think to have them match with the white boards and so forth would be really nice. So it could have, we're hoping it could have our logo on the top of the map in that circle, the way it has, and then the map would be even with the welcome to Buckland navy blue part, and then the two smaller signs would be underneath with the rules and an explanation of what our, our organization is doing.
I, I guess I'm wondering, would it be better to consolidate both signs?
We could, we could look into that-
Rather than having two, to say welcome and then all of the things that you want to say.
That's true.
Uh, maybe that would be less-
Yeah. Well, we can, we can get both ideas from the-
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
-sign maker person. Does that sound?
Bill?
What? I'm, I'm in favor of this. I think that's a nice offer that you're making. The only concern I would have is on the material we've got in advance is I don't think we should permit you asking for money as part of your, your-
Oh.
... what you do.
Not ask for my, oh-
I don't, I don't think you can suggest that you hope will join, that people will join your organization.
You know what? We've, we've taken that out, actually.
Okay.
Thank you. I thought, I didn't realize I'd given you that, that was an old copy.
So I said, membership dues and donations and we hope you'll join us.
Correct.
I don't think that's appropriate, but otherwise-
Yes, I agree.
I think it's a, it's a splendid idea and thank you for offering.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara Putnam, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple.
Thank you, Sally.
So I'm Putnam Kidder, I'm the Recreation Director and I had met with Sally and some other folks from the Little Lake Sunapee Protective Association to explore this option and I, I think it would be a good option to have increased signage. We do definitely struggle with the issue with people wanting to launch their personal boats there, their personal kayaks, their personal, it's not always bigger boats, but that does sometimes happen. But they're big, their kayaks and their wakeboards. So I think it would be beneficial to have that in a bigger, more prominent display. And I do agree that I think it would be good to have some sort of map so people can understand what it looks like, what the whole lake looks like and people especially who are visiting, guests and even locals, that might be a benefit. So, but we are in contact with the people who made the sign before out of Peyton Place in Newport and so we're going to talk to them about what we paid for the signs in the past and then we're going to have to look at access to and location because Bob was just telling me about the, on the right is access for the Highway Department to get to the, get into the beach. So we might have to look at another place. So, but I am, the rec, my, I'm in favor of the, the idea and I've mentioned it to the Rec Commission of having increased signage down there and more education for our staff and the people visiting the beach. I think that would be helpful. And I understand about the cost of the town not wanting to commit to the cost. So I think we can look at options and come back with more details about layout of the sign and location of the sign.
Is, is that favorable to you, Sally and Nancy?
Totally.
Okay.
We'll get back to you then-
Perfect.
-when we talk, get in touch with the sign.
Yep, great. Thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up to public comments. Anything from the public? Moving right along, old business? Okay. John, would you mind using the microphone?
All right. Hello, everybody. I, I didn't get quite to relate all my comments regarding to the police station because developments proved, I mean, you decided to give up the buying that property.
Could you speak up, please, John?
I, I haven't given you all, all my comments in regard to the police station because, the new police station, because you guys gave up buying the Beulah property, right? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess that's off the table now. I mean, I left, but I, I just, I'm actually for buying real estate, but, all right, but I'm for use of the town for future projects. I'm generally in, in favor of buying real estate. But let me just give you my ideas. I mean, you, you guys want to move on to other topics tonight and the police station is, you're going to be talking about it more so in the future, not today, all right, but I, I just have an idea here in regards to the police station or in regards to topics generally. Why not have a symposium where we, we could all get together and talk about it? A selectmen concern townspeople, the police, to present and discuss and argue, weigh various ideas rather than having people come up like right now for five or 10 minutes and give ideas. It's, it's not the best system. Because you, you can't question and answer, really. There, there is no question and answering. I just give it, a person gives a speech and sits down. So I propose that to you, that it, it can be public or non-public, I don't know, but we, we can get together and, and discuss things and I, I have ideas that, well, it would take a long time to discuss and you can't just do that here. I'll, I'll, all right, let me move on. My, my, two points against the police station, there, there are two. I, as, I related one to you, but the other one I haven't relate, quite related. The, the first one is in regard to the, the structure itself, that it's a large brick In, in, in an old colonial town like New London, it, it's a little out of place, it doesn't fit in easily with the older buildings, right? You could reply that we, we have the Hennepin and the Post Office complex and, and these are all new buildings, brick and glass, and this is true. However, I, I don't say this is particularly attractive area in part in London, but it's not bad, it's all right. But the, the key point here is how much is too much and what is the better course of And along these lines, I think that if, this is going to be a big, if you, if it's done, it's going to be a big building with a large parking area and I, I have a concern that we should not quote unquote Warnerize New London, okay? That, that, you know, you go into London from exit nine, you see that these big new structures, parking lots all over the place. It's not particularly attractive, I don't think it is. It's true, Warner has the older part, but my idea is to separate the new from the old. And you put a police station in the Beulah property or somewhere within certain bounds. This concern will, will, that, that, this concern of a new, modern structure that does not easily coexist with the older buildings in town, that concern will, will be raised. The bounds are from the four corners area roughly, right there, that junction at the four corners to the rise, right in front of the post office. There's a little rise there. The Beulah property is just over the rise. Okay, so, and, and I submit that there are all, no doubt, all lots of other alternatives like we, we could explore, I don't know, perhaps you have, I don't know, but exit 11, exit 12, the junctions there, perhaps there is some property around that area that we, you, you guys could look into. Okay, and the other concern that I have not related yet is the fact that this, is the mere fact that this new building, this new large building will be a police structure. I, I'm sort of old-fashioned, I believe, that this is service-related, police, the fire, the different things, they're service-related and we don't really want, or I suggest you can think about it, whether you really want a service-related structure to be so prominent. And, and the police, actually, if you think about it, it, it's not really a pleasant thought that we have to have such a huge police structure with, with cells in there, all these cars, guns. You, you really like that sort of thing? I, I don't think so. I don't think, I don't think it's a pleasant idea. I'm moving on, Nancy.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and look, look, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you, I'll throw in-
My suggestion is, first of all, I don't know if you're aware that the citizenry did come forward with a warrant that will be at town meeting relative to purchasing the Beulah property at the stated price of $3.75. I don't know if you were aware of that, I think you may have-
Oh, you, you guys going ahead with it?
Well, they have the 25, they have more than 25 signatures, so it will be on the warrant.
Well, and so I think it's probably a good thing. Oh, well, you, you-
Then there is, then there is another warrant piece relative to $50,000 for the design, should we move forward at the police station. So my only point here is, while, you know, you can add a few more comments, I would really recommend that you put your comments down on paper and that it become part of the written document-
Yeah.
-because I would hope as this goes forward, there would be lots of public hearings and discussions relative to design and so forth as this moves forward. But for now, if there are a few other comments you'd like to make, I'll entertain that.
All right. Thank you, it's very magnificent, Nancy. Well, okay. All right, so the first is the, all right, the first is the type of building, architectural type. The second is its use. My objection's against, against, second's its use. And the fact that it's located within these certain bounds, okay, meaning right in the heart of town, okay? If it could be separated a great, greater degree, like put at the junctions, that'd be better, in my opinion. You guys can think about it.
Okay.
I did note that, last time I was here, two, uh, two weeks ago, the police said, "We will work with New London to find a solution that is pleasing and befitting to the town and its people." And I mean, that, that was a nice statement, a good statement by the police, that they're willing to work with us. This is good and I say we work with them and let's push on now to get, to get a solution because it's been four or five years. All right?
Understood.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
But that's why I think it's also-
I'm wrapping up, I'm wrapping up, Nancy.
Thank you, John.
I lose my train of thought, by the way. All right. The last comment I had was, I was actually over at the police station three weeks ago measuring their cars, the height of their cars, and I thought that if you guys are going to put it at the Beulah property, which it's beginning to look probably, it's more probable as time goes on, that maybe you guys consider putting up a stone wall or a brick wall around it, around the parking area, a brick wall around the parking area. This would, and it would be about 58 inches high, maybe a little lower, that's a little lower than five feet, so as to afford the town some privacy and separation from the police station, I, I thought it might look better.
Okay, aesthetically. I mean, again, you know, it looks like you've put a lot of thought into this and you have things written down in your notebook. I think it would be helpful if you could consolidate that and then send it in to Kim and we could have it as part of the comments and discussions as this moves forward.
Okay, Nancy.
Okay, thanks, John.
All right.
Okay, new business. Discuss concerns of public works for overnight parking, town lot on Main Street. Sounds like you, Bob.
Sorry, it was a little late. Dirt roads were a little treacherous, so if anybody lives on any, be careful, got the crews coming in. As you can see in the photos, about 10 years ago, we had the parking lot opened up for overnight parking, so to speak. And we've been finding, as you see in the photos, we've been running into issues of concern with vehicles being parked there and left for some period of time. And one of these vehicles, the furthest one down, was actually left there for about two weeks and we had to plow around it. The gentleman finally removed it, brought it back and parked it in his same exact spot so he couldn't remove the snow. My concern is the public going into the library or wherever they may be going if that is left there over the weekend, they could trip over it, somebody could get hurt. But my biggest concern is occasionally we have vehicles parked in the center and at some point, one of my guys is going to end up having an issue where they back into that is what I'm thinking. It's just putting a, a bad situation on top of a worse situation, you know, with a snow event. So my recommendation would be to go back to the way we had it, close it from seven, uh, excuse me, 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. That gives us the opportunity to come in early in the morning, get the place cleaned up before the public actually goes to use it. That's pretty much what I'm looking for.
I think that's certainly reasonable. I would certainly support that. Bill or Janet, do you have any questions or comments for Rob, Robert? Okay, I'll make the motion then that we, whoop, hi, Joe. Yes.
I'll make a couple of comments. Joe Cardillo, I don't have any horse in this race. This is just something to be aware of. And I'll try not to get on my soapbox regarding events that happened before I moved to town with a piece of land next to the New London Inn, which was where the ice skating rink is. At that time, it was owned by the New London Inn back in 2007, there was an article to buy it. I just, as you're getting into deciding to make an ordinance, along the line, since that piece of land was lost, my recollection has been, and I've sold that property now three times, and each time the owners felt unfortunate they didn't have the advantage to keep that piece of land. And I've said on, in many occasions, in private circumstances, that if I had the $300,000 right now, I'd give it back to the town and ensure that went back to the inn because I think it stifled some growth in a very important area of town. It would have been a nice, we could move the skating rink in front of the gazebo. We have plenty of land for that. But it did pose, it, it created a problem, especially a parking problem. You know, if you've got 25 rooms in an inn, if you've got people who have to stay overnight, I understand it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use, right? You couldn't have 25-room hotel today with that amount of parking spaces. If we were building a new one, it would be one and a half spaces per room, there'd be plenty of rooms for employees, dinner guests, et cetera. I think it's important you go back to check some of decisions by previous boards because I do recall that previous owners, and I couldn't tell you who it was, whether it was the Wolf era, the Reed era, the Leroy era, when this happened, that there were some agreements made that because of the lack of parking, you needed people off of Main Street, that that lot could be used for overnight guests. And I'm not sure how you dig into that. Some of that may have happened before you were here, but I think-
Yeah, the only, the only thing I know, we currently have an ordinance that prohibits parking there. I don't, I don't know when it was adopted, but well before the 2013 decision when the selectmen allowed this to be used temporarily. I believe Dan Wolfe came in because he was having a Valentine event and he needed the extra parking. And so it has been temporary and we just haven't revisited it. Now recently, Bob Harrington and his people are having these issues, so-
Yeah, and clearly, these are not, these are not inn guests.
So there's all- So, there's already an ordinance prohibiting it and it has been in effect for, I'm not sure how long.
Right.
So, if, if there was some agreement on it, like Dan wanted on it, a particular event night, that may be. But there's nothing in the ordinance that says there's a relaxation of the rule for the inn. There's no exception, at least in the ordinance, so I'm not sure.
Okay, then my recollection could be wrong.
Or maybe it was before the ordinance was adopted.
There was discussions from time to time, whether it was a temporary. All I'm suggesting is make sure we understand that there's some accommodation, there were some accommodations made for the inn. I'm hopeful, you know, we want to do everything we can to allow them to succeed and thrive. They no longer have the land where they can expand to put some, you know, a dozen extra parking spots behind that green area. So, I think just keep that in mind.
Right, and this isn't year-round, it's a, it's a seasonal thing.
Understood.
Okay.
Understood, but the winters are issue. You can't have cars there. You do need to get it cleaned up. And again, this is clearly not, what we're seeing is clearly not inn guests, that's a problem. But in your consideration, check back on records, selections meetings, minutes, because I think there was some discussion on allowing overnight guests to park there. And again, it's, I'm not speaking for the inn, I'm just speaking on allowing, ensuring that we have our local businesses have the ability to thrive. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Further discussion? Bill or Janet? So, I'll make a motion that we enforce the existing ordinance during the winter here. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, New London Day 2023, group requests, May 6th is annual cleanup day.
Right, they have been doing that for years. This year, the weekend they've selected is Colby Sawyer College graduation. In the past, the board hasn't allowed that, but they have asked that they, since they've had it for a few years and they see the kind of activity around town, they do not believe it would interfere with the college's graduation. And as you recall, we use, this very parking lot is where they bring the trash that everybody's collected and bring it all to the transfer station. I forget how many years we've been doing it.
Is it Town Park in there?
Yeah.
She meant the conversation, this, not here, but.
This one, that one.
Okay. Sorry.
So, the question is, will you allow them?
Is the college okay with it?
I don't think they've been asked. Do we need to ask, I mean, just as a courtesy?
Yeah, I don't think that's a good weekend.
Okay, I can tell them, we can say that you don't want to do it.
Like, the week before would be good.
For.
Or after.
Or after.
Yeah, I just, I mean, if you want the town to really look nice, I think, to go the week before. And I think the college would be heartily in favor of that, but I think if we're running around picking up trash, the morning of graduation is really not something we want to sell to the public.
Okay, I'll tell them.
I agree with that. I don't think we need to take a vote. All right. Appointment of fire wardens as recommended by Chief Lyon. I don't see Chief Lyon, so.
I'm here, here, here. This is.
Sorry, this is the annual appointment of the forest fire wardens. Here, I'll send it down, Bill. That wasn't a very good toss.
Is he here, you do this?
No, there are the applications there.
So, do we just want to approve the slate?
Yeah.
Does anyone have any? It's Jeff Daly, Park Adams, Courtney Heath, and it's all Travis Schifrin, Peter Smith, Tom Pelter, Gina Edmonds, Mike Mathie, Corey Bartlett, and Quinn Miller. So, I would propose that we accept the slate?
Accept.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Do we sign this?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, I'll add it to the pile. All right, Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, since we last met, we did have a very, I think, successful budget hearing last night. All materials for the town report have been submitted today and we are in hopes that we get our town report quickly. As we all know, the deadline is seven days before the town meeting, so I'll keep you updated as to that. Otherwise, I don't have anything else to report.
Thanks, Kim. Committee meetings and reports? Janet?
No.
Bill? Other than the Budget Committee, which we know where that's at. All right, meeting minutes. We have minutes from January 5th, January 12th, 23rd, and 26th. Does anyone have any objection to, has every, have you had time to review all of them? Should we just vote on them as a slate?
Sure.
All right, I propose that we accept as a slate the meeting minutes for January 5th, 12th, 23rd, and 26th.
Okay. Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We have a litany of upcoming meetings. The next Board of Selectmen's meeting is February 23rd. Any other business to come before the board? Is there, is there some confusion back there?
It says, "Three thousand more has, has been finalized."
It was finalized last night after the Budget Committee finalized it. The Board of Selectmen finalized it and we signed it this morning.
I'm sorry?
Because there were no changes?
I, I just didn't, I'm.
Yep, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, glossed over it. I think we're all a little tired of back-to-back meetings, that's all. Okay, any other business? All right, then we'll go to approval of pay vouchers and permits and so forth.